Brian Hampton. Dana Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Hampton.
Here.
Steve Sky.
Here.
Sandy said she cannot make it and Barb will probably be here any minute, so we'll go into approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
And Steve. Seeing no discussion, council please vote. Next up is the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Brian and Dane. No discussion, council please vote. That is approved, she takes us to the public forum, which is time to decide for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken, is there anyone here to speak in the public forum this evening? Make your way to the microphone there, you can state your name and address.
Name is Jim George, one zero zero nine Sampson Drive. I appreciate the chance to address council here currently. I like to walk and have appreciated your efforts to upgrade the sidewalk system in town. Over the years, there's been some real improvements out there. The one problem I have is across city property. Sampson Drive, we're between the four H Hall and the cemetery. So I'm up on I Avenue, walking across the south side of the cemetery. Out in the street. A lot of folks use that simply because that is a connection to the the loop around Wilson Lake, the creek, creekside. The city is planning on connecting I Avenue S fourteen is what that is with Airport Road along with the DOT projects. Probably sooner more than later. I'll tell you right now, it's pretty sporting. Going from lane to lane, avoiding the traffic as you go along there and it's just, it's going to become more so. Oh, once that connection is made, I would appreciate council directing our engineers. Take a look at that problem and it's not a big problem, it's just putting the sidewalk. I would estimate you're going to put that on the north side, but it would sure be well received, I appreciate your time.
Thanks Jim, and I can give you a little bit of background on that because we did a walkability study and that was one of the areas that they looked at. One of the issues I know we had was the amount of depth there off the roadway with the grade was difficult to fit a sidewalk in on the north side. And I know they were looking at the south side as being the pedestrian route, so. I know it was looked at, that's the last update I had from it, I don't know if staff has anything else to add, but I think Tim heard some of that and Jordan too at the time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, that's an important spot for sure. Saying nobody else here to speak in the public forum, we'll close the public forum, move to old business A, approve pay request number twelve for the field house from HPC LLC. We mounted three hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty-five cents.
Move to approve.
Okay, Steve, Jason. No discussion, council please vote. Thing that is approved, takes us to B, approved change order number four for twenty twenty-two street improvement from Manats Incorporated, the amount of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars and twenty cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Barb, Dane. No discussion, council please vote. Approved, takes us to C, approved pay request number five for twenty twenty-two street improvement project from Manats Incorporated, amount of one hundred eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Steve and Barb. No discussion, council please vote. Approved, takes us to D one, approved change order number two and they reduced amount of twenty-nine thousand, ninety-two dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Brian. Seeing no discussion, council please vote. Is approved, takes us to two, approved pay request number three, final and the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred, nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty cents.
Approved, second.
Steve. No discussion, council please vote. Approved, takes us to three, resolution number five, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, a resolution accepting the Jordan well number four, plugging and abandonment project is complete.
Approve.
Second, Barb and Brian. No discussion, council please vote. It is approved, takes us to new business A, discussion appropriate follow-up request from Andy Kelly, storm hookup after CBD project. And Andy's here, if you have questions, I know there's info in your packet, Jordan also has some background too, so.
Yeah, so I was told, I think a lot of this, I don't know when this actually happened, but I think it happened a little bit before my time being here, I know the north part happened when I was here. But I was told by Jeremy that we talked with all of the property and business owners downtown and what we said was we would. Tap in for you, but it is the property owner's responsibility to carry the line to our line. So I, that is what I was told. And I know that we had a similar outcome with Parker Law Firm and I'd have to look back to see who actually paid for that, but I believe the city paid for, or Parker Law Firm paid for that.
You're saying if you had a drain line, it was your responsibility as the building owner to inform the city of that and then pay a hookup fee basically?
Correct, well, we would pay the hookup fee, but you just had to get the line to that, to that one, to our line, to the collector line.
Yeah, go ahead.
Please do.
I, I was here during the planning. Preheating, I, I don't believe. Sean, you were out for that, if there was a line in place, they were supposed to hook it up, were they? Right, yeah, I had a line in the ground, I mean, there was nothing for me to do and I kind of went along. Talked to Fred Samuelson, his were hooked up off of his building without any talk to him. Rick Wilson, Audio Zone hooked up, Kerry Martin was hooked up. The dance studio over by Ally's Pizza after the fact was hooked up because he had them there and they hadn't done it, hooked them up. Bob Engelhardt was hooked up and basically everybody I talked to. Now, Rich Parker was after the fact, he didn't have one going to it and the Masons had also done a project to do it, they, they did pay to hook it up, but. As far as I remember, everybody that had an existing storm line was supposed to be hooked up. No reason for it not to be, I mean, we wouldn't go backwards. My line's still in the ground, as near as we can figure, currently washing out your alley, I mean, it's. Right there where it should be hooked up, everything's coming off my roof. What doesn't back up into my building is undercutting your new alley, so I, there. My line was there, there's nothing for me to hook up, everybody I talked to, everybody I can see going up and down. Nobody did anything special, have hooked up, they had roof lines there, roof lines were hooked up, Brian, do you, do you remember the pre?
It was, if I remember, we were gonna hook everybody up.
Yeah, people that didn't have them were encouraged to make a lane because the idea was that they could get a better deal since the contract was on site.
On every project, right?
So somehow in the process, we missed, basically missed that line, we didn't, someone didn't see it.
Well. Sean was gone, Ryan wasn't here, and that was kind of on tracks excuse was things had gone pretty smoothly while Sean was around and there was a lot of stuff in that alley and it was missed. I have another guess, but it's not going to bear out till we open it up. I threw a camera down it and threw a locator down it and. It's not my primary, we've got equipment. I never believe my locator when it goes down a metal drain because you get echoes, I, do you? So I depth check, if, if I throw it down and I get a direction, get a direction, get a direction, I'm checking four feet, four feet, four feet, two, four feet, four. I think I've got, I mean, I, at forty-two feet, I run a clean white gravel, I hit it.
Hit the wall.
But I'm doing a depth check at about four foot, four inches. And if you look down the grid collector in the alley, I'm guessing I'm a little deeper than that, my guess is, without any supervision, just a guess. I might have been two inches shy of doing a direct hookup, but nobody was there to do anything different about it. And it got covered, that's, that's my guess, is that I'm just under the alley collector height. And there, there was not an easy solution found, but I don't know, I, I mean, we won't know until we dig it up, like I said. I'm, I'm dropping into a cast collector and insta, and I did what I could, I threw a fish tape down first, you run a rotor router down, you lose a lot of your effective distance of the coil, I put a flat fish tape down. I put an insulator between my fish tape and the pipe, tried to get it down to where the tile is to get a clean signal. But knowing all that, since, since there's a lot of junk in the alley. Since I initially start on a cast iron drain. I'm not positive, I, I think I know where it is, it corresponds with the cracks in the concrete. Corresponds with in line with the storm sewer, but it's just a guess as to why it wasn't hooked up, my, my guess is I'm two inches too low. To, to do it by code.
So I see we have a quote in here for what is sixteen grand and some change maybe, is that? Is that the amount? Is there, is that the amount that's going to take care of this, or is there some risk that that doesn't fix it and there's something?
Well, on top of it, I, you know, I need to get this hooked up and I, I think the city does too, like I said, I, I'm flooding areas that have never flooded, I've got a problem. It's doing damage. On top of it, if it's where we think it is, it's doing damage to your new project, I think it needs to get hooked up. But I would like to see my efforts finding this reimbursed and damage that I have at least partially taken care of. You know, when they flooded State Bank, State Bank was, was paid for, hit the theater, theater was paid for. I've got a burst roof line, scupper box and some badly undercut concrete and the concrete's not great, I'm, I'm, I'm aware that I need to do some cost sharing on that, I want to run the apron out and the concrete wasn't new. But even if I wasn't volunteering to do it, if, if my guess is correct, correct and I'm lower than they are. They're going to have to come back and take out my concrete to readjust the height anyway, so I, I think I'm being more than fair, saying I'm, I'm willing to cost share. My damage for me to get an improvement, run the apron out. Because I, I think even if you're diet, they're going to be taking the concrete up anyway to fix it correctly.
An wired other.
There's no concrete work on this quote.
But you saw the quote, I.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
And I'm not sure if I'm right about my height, I'm not sure there's any, any drainage from my building to that, you know, as far as like six inch tile out to it, there's a pothole and a connection.
Oh no, sorry, there's twenty-five, forty-five yards of paving replaced.
That's the, the pothole in the street, that's not me. And if, if I'm right, that they'll have to raise the drain line up to reconnect, that's, that's none of that work in there either. That's, I think, just a spot connection, I think.
So if we approve this, that's not the whole thing? What you're saying is going to be more than this?
Well, like I said, I, I have some damage on my end, I, I would like that.
My other thing about this would be. And I know it's going to take some digging to go back, but if. They were supposed to connect everyone and we'd have to go back because I'm a little cloudy on it too because it's been a few years. If they were supposed to connect everything and then Ontrack didn't connect it because they can use any excuse they want, but if that was in the contract to connect them. Are they partially responsible for this damage because they didn't connect it? Because if the sewer line, if the collector line is here and Andy's line's here, it's a lot more work and if they didn't want to do it, they just didn't do it, which. May or may not be the case, not throwing anyone under the bus, but do we need to have HR green or do we need to go back and see what was the scope of work on this project? I mean, has Ontrack got some ownership in this? And maybe they don't, maybe it was a case by case basis, but they said, hey, each connection costs this much and we just paid them for the ones they did?
Well, and I mean, and what could have happened is when, after we got in there, they could have figured out that the line was not at the, the right depth, so I.
Didn't want to do it.
So I, I think what we need to do is we need to go back, look at the contract, talk with HR Green and figure out what actually took place, that way we can do the right thing here.
But that being said, I think we should table this till we get some more information, because I don't want to tell Andy. No, we're not going to do it, or yes, we're going to do it and we got the open checkbook to do it. Or maybe we need to just do it and. Go back at, but you know, I don't want to pay Ontrack this seventeen thousand dollars to fix it. When part of the ownership's on them, well, then they got their money and then there's no, there's no recourse to say, hey. Write us a check back because you didn't do it right the first time, so I guess I don't know.
As, as much as I appreciate that, it did some substantial damage last time, I, I would prefer. Oh, I know. If you don't think the fault was mine and we're going to be repairing it, I'd like to see the repair get done.
Don, and I, that's was my next thought is, I was just getting ready to ask you. You know, if it's because we have a big gusher rain again, then what's, what's that mean for? Big potential.
Alley and Andy's property, but it's.
It's going to ultimately cost us a bunch of money too if we keep letting it erode what's going on in that alley.
I was going to ask Jordan if council could potentially approve to proceed, allowing him to negotiate with Ontrack based on the contract.
Let Jordan negotiate? I, I don't have a problem with that.
We'll talk with Aaron.
Staff, yeah, yeah, him and staff.
Just make sure we can with, Aaron is on the line, make sure she's okay.
Do that on discussion, Aaron.
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I, you can certainly do that, I would like to see you put a cap on what that amount would look like. And then we can revisit it if we need to expand that cap.
I mean, the cap of this plus what it might take to mitigate some of the damages that.
Well, I think, I think those are perhaps two different issues, Brian, because I, I mean, one is. What was required of the project and the other is what are you planning to do for your property owner?
Because this, this, sorry, Steve, go ahead.
I was going to say, I'd be in favor of approving expenses up to sixteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two or whatever that quote was we had there and if there's something more than that, then we got to come back and talk about it.
I mean, I think we'd have, have to get it done right, whoever does it. And then I guess we won't know about cost sharing till we know what it's going to cost, does that make sense, Andy? I mean. Like you said, it's got to be fixed.
Do, do you have?
I'm not against helping recoup some of Andy's stuff.
Do you have an estimate on the damage that was caused?
No, Ryan was there also, I, we'll jump right in on you, Ryan, damage it was caused, I. I would guess the progression of events, I'm not positive, I, like I said, my, my roof drain was burst, that didn't happen the last rain, it. Happened that I didn't catch it in time and I wasn't thinking about it, Ryan and I have talked and, and Tom, I've talked. I've got a building that's been getting wetter than it ever had before the program. I, I've talked to Ryan before, previously the storm sewers were under the footing of the building, so they drained out to the area really well. Storm sewers were put down. Four foot and then you pump out, so there's no perimeter drainage on any of these buildings, what we used to call I and I, there's no perimeter draining on the outside of the building, it's all determined on the inside of the building, so. My red building over there had water coming in to the outside of the perimeter and I kind of chalked it up to, I've got a sump pump. On a far corner, on an interior corner, doing what perimeter drainage used to be doing. So it's, it's always been in the back of my mind, especially since Tom's been out there for a month digging holes, trying to get his groundwater under control. And then we had the rain and, I mean, I had hydraulic pressure at ground level, it pushed stuff up out of the ground, it pushed water under. A flat pad, twenty-five feet back, it pushed water everywhere, so I started exploring, I'm betting what happened, why I had so many problems with the scupper box. And what took a little bit to catch is. I imagine that for the first season, it drained into gravel and then we went through a weather, had ground freeze. Go to spring, drain off my roof into an ice plug, first my scupper box, my Dallas spouts. Dump water where it's not supposed to, so it took me a season to start noticing problems, in that first six months, we wouldn't have any problem, we're, we're in fall, going into winter, drains into gravel, it's not until. I go into spring that I had the damage that I should have caught and then we had an overflow and it backed through there, how much damage? It undercut all of my concrete and I'm kind of hoping to do everything from my wall forward, I know it cowered out behind the wall, I'm willing to write it as off as a loss, but we've got. I don't know, I think maybe two thousand dollars of concrete, but you got to move an air conditioner to do it, you got to move everything out and, and then hope. That you find any damage underneath, what's undercut and where it starts getting fun, we've talked Ryan and Tom. Tom's building you a stick stem further, there's a basement there, so the reason my property is undercut so bad is because we think. All of my dirt flowed into his basement, I'm, I'm undercut, I'm cambered, you know, it's not that I cracked a little bit of concrete. We, we think when it pushed up, it slurried into him, he's. He's got a pit next to me. So how much damage, I, 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 I'm not trying to hang the city on anything, hopefully take the concrete out, bring some fill in, check for damage. Pour an apron out front and everything's improved, repair the scupper box, the Dallas spouts and, you know, cost of material hide. Hopefully under five thousand dollars, depending on if we find any real structural damage under there. And again, if, if it's what I think it is, most of what I'm talking about. Ontracks, somebody's going to have to do to hook this up anyway, if I'm, that I'm coming out a little bit deep. Then, then I'm asking for something, I think they're going to, kind of be forced to take care of.
Ontrack really can't do this repair that's in front of us without doing the rest of it anyway.
Well, if I'm wrong, if, if, if height comes out okay, then it's, it's fine, but we're going off of. Used camera that I've got that I, I don't run as a living. And a utility locator that I use to spot dig, we're going off my best guess, I think I'm right. But we're, we're sighting off the, the grid collector in the alley and, and my best guess reading fifteen year old equipment. Their estimate, I think, is for a pothole connection. And I, I think it's a fifty percent that to get this connection for all right, they're going to be digging right back to my Dallas spouts anyway.
I'm not against cost sharing because it sounds like it probably should have been done the first time. But Andy, you have to understand, you'd understand if you're sitting here, Terry, it's hard to say, yeah, we'll cost you no matter what it costs. That's why I think we asked what. That's why I think it'd be nice to get moving ahead with it. And if, like you said, it's true, one way or the other, they're either going to have to dig it all or dig some of it. So it's got to be fixed no matter what, so. I mean, where are we at there, other than you say, hey, here's what the extra cost was, are you guys willing to share it? I mean, so.
I don't, I don't know how else to do it.
Sounds like once they start digging, they'll be able to figure out whether they have to go all the way or not, right?
You could approve, like Aaron said, approve a cap to allow staff to work with the building owner and the contractor.
So do we do? So do we approve this and then, because this is separate, like she said.
We've had others that were.
But then we could.
It was difficult to determine whose fault it was and we've shared responsibility with contractors.
That's what I'm saying, do we approve this because this probably is on us anyway, but then approve something separate that says. You know, Andy thinks less than five thousand, we're good for half that, not to exceed that and if it exceeds that, then we have to come back and look at it again. Aaron, is that how we should do it or?
I think that sounds reasonable. I mean, you definitely need more information if you are going to. Allow a higher amount, so I think with the information you have today, that's really the only caps that you guys can set.
Is the way I explain, I mean, like.
Correct, so you have, yeah, you have the bid from Ontrack, so you know what their estimated costs are. Just knowing how construction goes, you might want to round that up, it's almost seventeen grand. Or almost eighteen grand, sorry, so you might want to just round up a little bit on that, but Mr. Kelly's telling you, you know, his best hope is five grand, so you would authorize up to half of that. But anything more than that, I think you're going to need to see more documentation.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was getting. So can we make a, this is a, this is its own item, can we just tag on that second one to the same motion or do we have to do a separate motion?
It's, it, it's the same. It's, it's with regards to the same hookup project, so I think you can do it all in one motion.
What, not to exceed twenty thousand?
Yeah, see, because we're seventeen here. And if we did twenty-five, if we did twenty-five hundred. Like Aaron said. Two thousand five hundred, just do that, is that the easiest way to do it?
Yeah, that's, yeah, twenty thousand five hundred, yeah.
And then if it goes over that, we just have to look at it again?
Yeah, we can do that.
Then thanks, can go ahead and proceed. Oh, so that we know something and so that there's no further.
Yeah, I'm not able to do anything yet.
Well, but yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll let Ontrack know that they're able to proceed with it and then Matt will just have to be in contact with Ryan when he's doing that to make sure that. To figure out if we need to do more or less or what it's going to take to get the project completed.
And Brandon's on too, sorry, Jugglering can help us review the original documents and. Figure out if Ontrack has some responsibility in the final.
I think we should at least, it's worth looking into.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to. Approve the alleyway project by Ontrack not to exceed twenty thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Actually. Wait a minute, it's seventeen.
Right.
So twenty-five hundred would be nineteen-five.
Is it twenty?
Okay, twenty thousand then, I'll minimize, yeah, twenty thousand's a good number. That work for you, Andy, and then you have to bring back if it's, we'll know when they start digging.
It's, it's better than I had when I came in, better than I had a couple of weeks ago, what, what I want to point out, when you're talking about half. I'm talking half the concrete, I think is fair that I should pay. Not quite sure why I'd pay, pull half the air conditioner, repair, I mean, there, there's a lot of stuff on here that, that I'm going to be eating.
Twenty thousand and then we'll just, yeah, we'll just, we'll just have to get the invoices when it's done.
I mean, no, it's, I'm, it's really all, I'm not going to say no because it's, it's better than I had when I came in, I've got a flooding basement and, and tore up concrete, so.
We'll talk later, I got an idea about your void. If you have a void. Yeah, I'll talk about it out later.
And we'll add too, as far as hookups go, I know they did re-hook New Carers up in the back, oh, granted, they took out the alley the hookup is attached to, so it like was in the same place, but. They hooked that one back up.
There's my motion, twenty thousand.
Second.
Brian, Steve, other discussion. Okay, seeing none, council please vote. Approved, good problem solving, everyone, thanks, Andy.
Just real quick. You're just going to, are you going to unhook the air conditioner and get it out of the way or you have to have someone else do that or is that something you do, I don't know? Do it yourself, I mean, it'll, it'll help, it'll help save you money.
I'm not sure. Just make sure.
Well, it doesn't matter, I'm just curious if that was something that you did do that or if you had someone else do it. Well, you do whatever, you do whatever, I'm just curious, because I'll have, like you said, it'll probably have to be done first before he can start digging.
I'm going to wait for them to pop, we'll find out.
Okay, 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 fair enough.
Hey, so that moves us to B, resolution number six, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between Iowa Department of Revenue and City of Nevada regarding state set off program.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Are. You know, discussion, council please vote. As approved, takes us to C, resolution number seven, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, resolution releasing land restrictions for North Campus of Story County Medical Center. This is a fluky one that I've been working with Lonnie from the hospital and with Latifah from the county. There's paperwork from nineteen forties that was never fully updated through the years, so. Um, technically, the property is still in the county's name and they have, so the county will have to take action. To move it to the Board of Trustees, the Hospital, Story County Medical Board of Trustees. And then when we conveyed it, we had the restriction that it could only be used for hospital purposes, which it hasn't been for over a decade, so.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, multiple seconds, Steve. Any discussion?
Oh, from from this after they do that, do we have to come back and annex it? Since it's technically the county?
No, it's in the city limits, but the county technically on paper owns the ground. So if you go to the recorder's office. It it was never further conveyed to the hospital board. Although they operated the property since like nineteen fifty-one. And I don't think we have a problem, just I don't think the county wants to deal with the issue, so.
Okay.
Their lawyers are working on what they need to do, Tim. Okay. Yeah. Any other discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to D, approve score, tennis court, basketball court, crack repairing court, recoloring for park department. Mr. Hanson's approaching the podium.
Okay, I have action form in your packet regarding this issue. Um, this is one project that I had hoped to do next fiscal year and not this fiscal year, but. Um, after looking at the courts this spring after they came through winter, um, this last winter was really hard on them. So I think um, we're best served to do it this year. Just to prevent further damage that would occur, I think, over this next winter if we don't do anything. Get those cracks sealed up and uh, recolor coat it and get it ready for next spring again. So, um, you know, again, this is something we've had done. Those courts were built in oh-six. We did work in two thousand sixteen and then uh. Looking here now, seven years later to do it again. So, you know, um, tennis courts are. Are a high maintenance piece of property. They uh, they'll always crack, so. Just trying to stay on top of it. We do have funding in our open space reserve account um, to take care of this um, item. So I would propose that we do it um, with Tennis Courts Unlimited. They were the individuals that did it last year. Or last time in two thousand sixteen, so he knows what he's what he's dealing with. We were pleased with his work. Um. As I mentioned in my report there, my action form, they'll also be in Ames this year doing some work for the City of Ames as well, so. Um, did have another company come in and look at it, Pro Track and Tennis. Um, their price was exceptionally high compared to Tennis Courts Unlimited. Um. I've also mentioned that Mid-American Court Works um, down in Kansas. They'd looked at the project but didn't submit a bid. Well, he did submit one. It was in my inbox this morning when I got to work, but he was eighty-eight thousand eight hundred. So, um, all things considered, it would be recommendation to go with Tennis Courts Unlimited who did the work last time in two thousand sixteen.
Move to approve option one.
Second.
Jason, Dane.
So, Tim, do do these courts last forever as long as you maintain them or do you have to go back at some point and rip the whole thing out?
At some point, they probably have to be removed completely.
How much more life do you think we'll get out of these by spending this?
Boy, I don't know, you know, hopefully it's hard to tell. You know, it's really kind of a weather thing too, you know, that freeze thaw cycle on those asphalt courts is hard.
But it's not time to rip it out and replace it yet.
No, I wouldn't do that yet. Nope. And this will be the tennis court and the basketball court. So I forgot to mention that, but it will be both. Do we?
Do we look at them and say, eh, we can get another year? Maybe we should do it, because I'm looking at the warranty thing here. If they got a five-year warranty. Are we going through the fifth and sixth year? I mean, when you're seven. You go, know I'm going with this, Tim. It's, either five, should there be something fixed, but we're just saying, ah, we're good enough. Oh, we need to, you know, you need to be more hypocritical of it while it's under warranty towards the end or. Well, I think this is fair, seven year.
I think it's fair. You know, you look at it and, you know, just because a crack opened seven years ago, doesn't mean that's the same crack that opened this year.
Right.
So, you know, you're dealing with different stuff all the time. So I think we just need to evaluate it each year and when we determine that, you know. It looks like we're starting to see some significant separation that we have to address that issue.
And the only warranty would be on repaired cracks anyway. It wouldn't be new. So, right, right, right. That's correct. Okay.
Good. No other discussion, council please vote.
Thank you.
That is approved. Takes us to E, approve FY twenty twenty-four Human Services Request Round Number One, Nevada Foundation. Coming forward to the podium.
Good evening. Putting my Nevada Foundation hat on. Uh, we had launched our Human Services Fund for the current fiscal year that started July one. We received four applications. Hey, just in case, let me pass this around. So you have a kind of current. We received, like I said, four applications. Let me highlight what the. Uh, gist of all four of those were. So IJAG, if you're not familiar with IJAG. Is a a program that Nevada implemented this past school year. Uh, it's designed as a dropout prevention program, uh, has served. Students exposing them to workforce opportunities, um, some special curriculum around career readiness. Something near and dear to my heart. Um, but this grant would be utilized to assist them with clothing. Uh, needed uh, to to work. And so that can be different for any, depending on the profession. That the student is is going into. So they're requesting uh, that grant amount. Um. Harmony Clothing Closet, uh, the funding, they've identified, they've actually provided us estimates on some new fixtures. Uh, to support their work here in the community. Uh, the Nevada Schools is requesting funding for their Student Assistance Fund. Uh, which can be used for a number of things uh, uh, in the upcoming school year. And finally, Food at First, uh, that five thousand would be directed to uh, food purchases, so. Uh, we received three out of four scores, just with vacation schedules and such. Uh, but um, the scores do vary, uh, but there were no concerns in recommending to the council and the foundation board. That we fund all four requests at the amount requested. That would bring the amount that the Nevada Foundation would be requesting from the city. Uh, for six, sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. We're still getting our nonprofits used to this funding and how we're distributing funds. Um, I know of at least two organizations that said, gosh, we weren't quite ready for that. Uh, we're still uh, taking the final reports for last year's fund and those are due at the end of the month. Uh, but I would recommend another funding round, uh, give us a month uh, to be able to get the word out about that. Do an August thirty-one deadline. Uh, we would take the recommendations, um, have the committee score, take the recommendation to the foundation. And then I'd be back a month from now, uh, with hopefully some additional requests, so. Believe the council allocated forty thousand uh, for the current fiscal year to support uh. Food, shelter and clothing needs in the community of Nevada, so. That's where we're at. I'll take questions you have uh, on the round of funding. I believe the foundation may have already forwarded the city a request for that amount, so.
Brenda, does the IJAG organization, is that forty-five hundred specifically for Nevada?
Thank you for, because because IJAG is a national program. It is only for Nevada. And I would say that. Uh, with. And you know, a number of these requests were very clear that it needs to be used for Nevada residents because it's city funding, so. That's part of what we collected in the background, that they are serving that particular audience.
Is IJAG a new request?
It is a new request. Yeah, that's a new organization that is requesting funding.
The harmony was just for some lighting fixtures?
No, I I I'm thinking like clothing racks. I should have been. My days in retail, we called those fixtures.
Very specific about that's what.
It it, you know, they actually provided a detailed listing of what they were gonna purchase, so. I appreciate detail, so that is an exact amount of some. Whether it be clothing rack or rounders or things for them to more effectively get more product out to their floor for people. I do not serve as a reviewer on this. I just overview, um, make sure that they're nonprofit that we have. Uh, that that's documentation in order, um, so that before the reviewers get the applications, they know that if they score them favorably. We're not gonna come back and say, oh, wait a minute, they're not a nonprofit, so. All of them have been vetted and have the appropriate documentation in the foundation files.
And then we'll get a. Follow up with what everything was spent on.
That's part of what needs to come in. So I think we've gotten two, maybe only one. In for the last funding round, but those are due the end of the month. So we're giving them a. Uh, a month after the close of the fiscal year so that we have documents in the file. For when your auditors come through. So I also provided, Karen, I've been working through this process. We'll have to see what the auditors say, but. I did provide her as well with all the applications so that those are, there's a paper trail there as.
There's no concern that we're handing out more money to the same organizations before we have their documentation of. What they spent it on. Not that I don't wanna give this out, just.
So one of the things that we could do is approve these requests. Subject to the report for the previous application being in. Before we actually turn over a check, we could make that predicated on that. So there, I mean, we're only a few days here before they need to get stuff in and nothing will motivate a report coming in. Looking at Barb. And the way there's another check.
It's a good idea because if. And I'm gonna pick on Barb because she's sitting next to me. You know, let let's say Food at First turns in their paperwork and they go, whoa, wait a minute, you guys didn't follow the rules.
Yep.
And we'd already cut them a check for this next.
And we're just further in the hole. I we do have harmony closets. I I do know that that's one that we've been closed out on, so I know that we would.
I think we probably should do that, make sure they're closed down on it.
As part of the process and.
Is that a little bit on us then for pushing this out a little bit too soon?
I think it's not uncommon. Other grants, uh, grant organizations or foundations I've administered. They've always been clear that you need to clean up the funds that you have because then it also makes it cleaner. In terms of you're not necessarily mingling funds, so.
Don't necessarily know these organizations used all the previous funds.
That that's correct, other than, um, it just because we were so late in the fund, I can follow up um, with them and. Shoot out a message that says, just a reminder, your reports are due here by the end of the week and before we can. Before we can give you additional funding, we need to know that you've spent the funds that. You had previously, so um, we can certainly do that. And I think if the foundation were here, they'd. Agree that that's a prudent thing to do, so.
So Brenda, put my foundation hat on. Is that something we should change in the application, maybe?
Probably, yeah. I think that's a good, a good, a good recommendation, Brian, is that. That um, we'd be a little clearer that. I I don't envision that anybody's gonna have concerns with that, but I I do feel like we can make it clear that.
Cut our eyes and cross our t's.
That's right. And again, we're we're gonna have to ultimately see what the auditors say about this process too, and.
Yeah.
We're gonna know more here in the next couple of months as we roll through the audit process, so. I think we've done our best to try to. To take the funding from you, but creating a process that everybody's comfortable with and meets. Uh, the intent of the donation you're making to the foundation to fund these these applications, so. But I don't know that we even need to act. I just think the agreement was, I was gonna bring that recommendation forward if you had feedback. I'll take that feedback and pass it on to the. The ones we anticipate funding and let the foundation board know that as well, so. Any other questions related to uh, human services funds?
Do we need to approve this?
Those are proven.
Do, it does, I mean.
Yeah.
Is it approving, ultimately, it's approving sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars to the foundation. To support these four applications, see.
I'll make a. Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, put a knee.
Brian, Steve.
With the stipulation that they get.
Can I also make a quick interjection too?
Yep, go ahead, Aaron.
I wanna make sure that the contracts that they're signing this year are the version that I had circulated. Last year, because I I think when I saw them, they were, they were antiquated version. So I wanted to just make, I'll recirculate that, but I wanna make sure it's the version that that came from my office.
Yeah, and I don't know that I saw that, but we can certainly utilize that. Okay. I just, yeah, so and I I'll make sure the foundation board sees that too, so. You can get it to Jordan and you can make sure I get it or Karen, so we'll we'll go with that contract. We also haven't signed that before they get the check too, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks for that.
No discussion? None, council please vote.
Okay, thank you.
Takes us to F, resolution number eight, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution to approve revised open records policy.
Move to approve.
Second, Brian, Dane. Session.
What is the actual change that we've made?
I think it's mostly fees, isn't it?
Just a fee change?
Mostly fee changes.
So, so I can give you some update on this. Um, so last year I had um, had some new guidance with regards to open records. And a couple of things is one that you have to make sure that it's actual costs incurred to the city. Um, and so we we wanna make sure that. We not only have just the copy fees, but we have the time included. For Karen's time, for my time, if it comes to me for IT, um, if it goes to IT. The other thing is, is it's highly encouraged that if the response to the request takes less than thirty minutes. That we don't charge for that staff time. So we wanted to make sure that we had those two big bases covered. Um, I've also just made some additional like monitoring time. Making sure that we've got, we can, we can collect as much of the actual cost that we can. Um, but still be in compliance with IPB regulations. So it's been, it's been since two thousand sixteen since we updated this and we just thought it was a good time to do it.
Thank you for the background.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Got, there's a type graphical error. We just need to change. Where it says date and time during regular city business house instead of hours. I'm sure that. Grammar check didn't catch that. But that was.
Our proofreader Barb did.
Yeah.
Not. Sure, it's probably been, that's, those sentences probably didn't change. It had been around for a long time, but.
I know Aaron already said that she got that change earlier, so. No other discussion, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to report, starting with city administrator.
All right, we started working on eleventh and H. Uh, they have. That crosswalk torn out and they should have the stop signs put up by Friday. Joe and I have been working with the county, Darren and Andrew, their secondary roads. Uh, department. On a twenty-eighty agreement. That way we can start working. Better together on maintaining roads and everything, um. Save some time for us, save some time for the county as well. So after we get all. So after we get all of that finalized, we'll send it off to county attorney and city attorney, so they both can review and. Um then we can put that in front of the council. Had a couple of board meetings for S P A and I M U, uh the paving crew for West Third. Will be in next week, they'll be doing the subgrade for for that project, so we're getting a little bit closer. Uh had a wastewater Burke meeting, another meeting with the railroad. Centralio Regional Transportation Planning Alliance, uh Brenda and I met with them to talk. C D B G and the facade grant. The typical N E D C meetings, uh we also had another housing rehab meeting to talk about that, I did finalize. Uh the rehab basically document, and I sent that off to surplus so they can actually look at it and review. See if it's in line with other housing rehab program programs across the state. And then we also had a core of engineers meeting with pertaining to our sponsored project because. Uh some of the permitting is inaccurate, so we'll have to resubmit for the permits. And then uh a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about right of way trees and. Joe's been looking at our SUDAS standards and he he found some language that he would like to include, so you will be seeing some. Different language to include in our ordinance that will be updating uh very shortly as well. Other than that.
Jordan, do we, do we have any plans to deal with the dead trees in the city parks and city property?
Yeah.
There are quite a few that are pretty visible right now.
Yeah, um we've. We've actually knocked down a lot of trees, um.
That's really good. Okay. On the list. All right, good.
Unfortunately, that's something that, you know, it's like we can't, we can't get caught up on.
Yeah.
So um we've planted over two hundred trees this uh in the last year and a half.
Yep, very understandable, but. Awesome, thank you.
There's no trees out there currently that are danger of any limbs falling off of them or anything like that. That might need to get looked at sooner. Yeah. Okay, all right.
Jordan, what uh? Is this wastewater thing with Burke just perpetual, we're never gonna get it taken care of, it seems like it's been years. Since we, I mean, every.
It is.
And I appreciate your efforts, don't get me wrong, but it seems like every meeting, well, we had another meeting with Burke. I mean, um so it's the holdup, I mean, what's the, I mean, are they, do they not like it, are they? They wanna just keep renegotiating it or?
Uh really, the, what we're trying to figure out is the overall costs associated with Burke's portion. So we're we're working through that portion of it, and there's some language that we're updating as well. Um but yeah, you're right, I I've been working on it since I've been here and uh we're getting to the point where it really needs to be finished, so we're hoping it'll be finished within. Hopefully, the next couple of months.
That's the one that goes with the original agreement.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Their development agreement said that it had like placeholders, like this is where we think it is, but there'll be a future negotiation for the wastewater plant.
Yeah. Um so yeah, this is in lieu of the two thousand three wastewater treatment plant or uh. Agreement that we have with them, so yeah, we we updated every twenty years, we're working on. Changing that language as well, so we can start working on it beforehand, so we don't have this issue again, but. Yeah, we uh we will be finishing that very soon, we submitted our final copy of what we're proposing, I guess. To Burke and their their attorneys are reviewing it right now.
And some of that was due to the unknowns for the construction and final costs and things like that, right?
Yeah.
Loaded down.
Yeah, that, and we also added another uh piece to the contract. That is uh the exact language we have in our in our other wastewater agreement contracts that wasn't previously in there, so. Uh we've had a little bit of change, but um it should be.
It is. You can see, it it just seems like it's been forever, but.
It has been forever, but no, we uh we definitely have to finish that sooner rather than later because there's some other things that are contingent on that, so that. That is going to be a high priority on our list.
Okay, thank you. Jordan? Oh, Andy?
Yeah, so we discussed, we discussed it, we had a couple of concerns from citizens and we figured the right thing to do would probably get. Get a steering committee together and also I've been working with uh surplus and I reached out to R D G who does this stuff. Quite a bit and I'm getting criteria um set up, that way we can go through that as well. What do you mean resubmit? Well, we haven't submitted any applications yet. Well, we have the current list, so what we'll do is we will resub out to that current list. Yes, we will have to if we're going to do a steering committee, because they will have to review all of the buildings that are submitted rather than just. A few.
I don't think there's actual, only thing that we ever did so far was just having show interest and kind of the scope of the work. Nothing, nothing detailed.
And there's.
Yeah, I think there's gonna be a more detailed submission. When we do the committee.
No, it's actually due um December one, I I believe, I was on the phone with them. Today they're trying to find the due date and he believes it's December one. The September one is the Brownfield Grant, so I apologize for misinforming you, but we have a few other things we're submitting for as well.
I tell you, buddy, because of the talk. Well, we'll have you go to the microphone just so the recording picks it up.
June twenty-second. We got an email for a meeting on June twenty-sixth, and it was to get as many people as possible to apply. Listed items, including touch pointing, we need to dock point, so I was kind of excited, we went to the meeting. And then um July thirteenth. We decided on seven to ten storefronts. And whatever, we didn't get selected, but that's fine, roll the dice, don't get selected, my wife was upset, so I figured I'd follow up. And I called Emily on Monday, and I didn't understand any of the answers I was getting. Uh she had explained that. Our building was actually preferred, preferred by Emily and Evy. And she was frustrated with the process, I I asked several questions, you know, we've, we've paid taxes on the building twenty-three years, haven't been part of any downtown. Projects uh as far as I knew fit the criteria. And she, she relayed, I can't speak for her, that uh her and Evy felt like it was. Solely your vote, and I couldn't find any criteria. Or any oversight, and if we're backing up from it, that's fine, the problem we've got now is. I'm the complaint, I called Jim up and and admitted I'm the complaint, now we've got seven people that were announced. They're gonna be recipients of the program and I'm the squeaky wheel, I withdrew my application, uh it's whatever, that. But we're not gonna take any money from it anyway, but. I came up here and we had a a good discussion over what may be twenty-five hundred dollars coming to me, we review it. Uh we, you had the human aid come in and have some questions for that, I went. For the city giving out a hundred thousand dollars. And we were told we weren't gonna get it, and as far as I knew. I can't find any criteria and I can't find any oversight, so I was frustrated, I mean, I was, I was mad. Then we can start over, we take applicants, and I'm gonna have potentially seven very angry people at me for. They've been announced recipients of it, may not be recipients. I think it's been mishandled badly. Uh and I think we're probably gonna be hurt from it, but.
I apologize, I mishandled it. It's my fault.
It it was painful. And I'd. Ask for twenty-five hundred dollars and justify it, and. On potentially four hundred thousand dollar project excluded with no reasoning. There's, there's some concern, that well-founded or not, you talk to some people, the detractors of Main Street in Nevada. They, it's the same people that get it, you know, people pick winners and losers. Yeah, it's not always founded, I mean, I heard the same thing was on council. You don't think anybody says that?
I know people say it, but I, it's absolutely not true.
And and I didn't say it was true.
Yeah.
But in this case, it was mishandled enough that that it. There was no.
I I don't think this has any bearing on any previous funding of downtown projects, this is a completely different.
Okay, this is the one that I participated in.
And we're, we're happy for that. Now, I I don't know anything beyond what you've told me, so as far as people.
Incorrect, Jordan?
No.
Okay.
Who's the oversight on this C B D model? Who makes the decision, who gets it, who doesn't get it?
Uh so that's what the steering committee is for. So basically, what we need to do is we need to get together and we need to create a steering committee. Uh when I was talking to Brenda about it, we were talking about pulling people from outside the community, that way there is no biased opinions over that. We also talked about having Main Street involved, since they're the ones that have the skin in the game as well, so those are the two options that we kind of threw out. Um.
Where's that money come from?
It's a a federal grant.
A federal grant, that's a hundred thousand from the city.
So it's a quarter from the city, a quarter from the building owner and fifty percent from the federal government, I think.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty thousand from the city, two hundred and fifty thousand from property owners and five hundred, well, up to six hundred thousand from. Uh the federal government.
Now, and I'll say I'd heard about it uh just a couple of days ago too, and I think, I think the steering committee is a good idea, I. I don't know what any of these opinion is of that, I know there were obviously concerns about some of the direction before, but. I think coming out of here, and I'd like to just make sure that everybody's on the same page, we have a good process going forward to make sure we do it right, because. We've never, to my knowledge, done a C D B G, I don't know if. Brian or Andy know if we've applied for one, so it is really a new process here.
Well, and I think if it's city money involved, then the city needs to be a little more involved in the decision-making, like I said, I don't know who made the decision. Who got the money.
Applicant for this?
The city is a actually the applicant, and I can, I can talk about the decision a little bit. Um so when I was talking with Andrew, he was saying that the properties or the cities that have been most successful are the ones that have. Um adjoining buildings and uh we chose Ben Franklin because it's six storefronts. And uh the next buildings to it, Cochlear. A- as well as Camelot need a lot of work as well, so those were the buildings that would pose the most impact for our community, so that. Big reason for Ben Franklin was because of the six storefronts and we'd be able to take care of six out of. How many storefronts that we have, so um like I said, I apologize, I mishandled it. We'll get a steering committee going and um then we can move forward and go the right direction.
When we apply for this grant. And if I'm regurgitating something that you already said, I apologize, but. Do we have to identify the properties when we?
We do, we have to identify those beforehand, I believe. So uh Andrew Collings is the person that's kind of in charge of this whole um project, so. And he's out of town currently this week, what I plan on having him do is come up and actually do an assessment of our downtown as well.
And I know there was something too about rather than do the whole downtown at once, they thought would be most successful, we broke it into phases, is that?
Yeah, so they, they said eight uh eight to ten buildings is what's been most successful because the money is. Extremely thin, once you get to uh going to more buildings for it, so they they suggested doing a phased approach, so. Doing two to three phases and that's something that communities have done in the past.
So it's not a one and done, you come back for several rounds of it.
Yeah.
Downtown is.
I think my personal goal would be, we'd wanna get through the whole district. And take advantage of it as we're able to get successful grants approved. But I think some of it came down to some guidance that was given about how to have the best scored grant and things like that and. But yeah, I think having a committee actually work through it and bringing in some other folks would be good to make sure it's transparent, everybody knows what's going on.
All right, well. I I think this is going to arm us, there's not anything we can do about it, but. Yeah, I'm not, on the outside looking in, there was nothing about this I could see that ever looked like any city disbursement of funds ever before, I couldn't find any justification. And the concern I had talking to Emily and the reason I called Jim right away is it's gonna be my name on killing, it's. Uh this went in the packet on Wednesday. And we still haven't informed any of the business owners yet, right, that we were premature on announcing it, so I, I mean, other than if somebody was reading the packet. The the seven building owners that have been announced who still don't know that this is gonna be pulled out.
I believe there is going to be an email going out, the reason it didn't go out last week when I was talking to Emily about it, it was because the person was out of town, so that's why there hasn't been an email out. So I I apologize again, but we'll get an email out.
Okay.
A- Andy, we wanna see your building get restored and unified as much.
There's no way we're gonna participate in this, I mean, I I I can't have killed it for the people currently and then reapply, I.
I don't understand why not, I mean.
Because it's gonna look like I was fighting it just to benefit.
I I disagree, I don't think that hurts you at all, I I think you were right to question some of these.
Would you have some irritation if you got dropped and I got the grant? Okay. For for me to be able to talk to. To Emily about it, I I thought.
I I I understand, but I don't think that it is going to affect how your project is scored.
I would, I would suggest.
Submitting it to be scored, I mean. I I don't care about being scored.
Sour grapes now, you're saying I didn't get picked the first time?
No, because I need to be able to live with my neighbors, I'm not gonna take it from them, I'm not worried about going before your committee, I don't care how it gets scored.
I think all of downtown wants to participate in this project, everybody wants our downtown beautiful, way more beautiful.
We are not going to take money from our neighbors that they were announced they were gonna get.
What about round two? Do it round two.
Probably not, sour grapes then, yeah, this, this is, it's a bad deal.
I'm just trying to find out where you stand.
He said in the packet on Wednesday, where is it in the packet?
I I have everything in his his notes.
Thursday, I put, I put it in my report.
No, the rules are, they're supposed to have everything to Karen by Wednesday to go in the council packet to be delivered, so. We knew as of last Wednesday that we were gonna form a committee, but we still haven't informed any of the business owners, we've. We've already told, I mean, Jim's had a mason there, he's been moving ahead as if they need to be preparing for work. He he hadn't heard about it until today, when I called in a panic apologizing to him.
I think that probably concludes that what we could say about that topic, but. No, I think it's good that we come up with a good process, hopefully. Um all of our building owners feel comfortable participating in some phase of the project, I think that's important, um. Other than that, I don't know if council has anything that they would like to add tonight on that, any other guidance or? Anything for Jordan? Yeah, and you can expect, I'm sure, more information back, any other, any other topic you'd like to ask Jordan about? Okay, then we'll move on, um you did a good job summing up the the housing task force, but the information. Um that Brenda worked, I think she got some help from Barb pulling together resources, it's provided to go on our website, I haven't. I think it got up there, is it on there live now or?
It is, yeah.
So there's a resources page on there, so community members can find stuff compiled in one place. Um we also should be getting out one of the homes for Iowa homes um. That prison industries puts together, so Story County gets place one in the next year, so that that was exciting, and then. Um yeah, the the housing rehab actual grant program for the Story County Housing Trust Fund, having some of those parameters. Hopefully in front of you at a relatively soon meeting, so don't have too much else to add other than, I reported on R V T V last time, don't really have. Too much new for that, so council, any questions for me? Too much new for that, so council, any questions for me? Council reports?
Thinking highway days, moving forward that, uh. Got so much going on Friday now, I'm starting to get complaints that we have too much going on on Friday. So. There's that. But no, it should be a great time, I can't wait. Got a lot of good stuff. Trying to pack it all in, see what we can do.
Anything else? And we'll go to staff.
The, our water department, uh, we switched one lime system, so we got doing maintenance and cleaning up the other one. Uh, repaired a couple pumps, broke down, got them running. Uh, busy doing locates, uh, the guys have been. GPSing as much as they can in their free time, trying to get our maps updated and. Probably Starbucks will go in Wednesday. And test for his distribution one, so. Be getting closer to getting up on his license. Other than that, any questions?
Water pollution control. Just our normal, regular operations, monitoring maintenance of the wastewater plant, remote flow basin lift station. Form semi-anal. Uh, service on our compressors for our sludge pumps in the digester building. Uh, water in progress interned started two weeks ago. That's going okay so far, and then we had, um. Primary sledge line plugged on one of the primary clarifiers and the valve to. Blow the line backwards was busted, so we had to repair that line or that valve before we could fix the slush line, but. We got it. That's pretty much it, anything else? Thank you.
Hello, well, we have had a really busy summer at the library and, um, I've just got some initial numbers, um. So for our summer learning program, learning challenge, which started June. And the bulk of our programs for them is done now, but the challenge actually continues until August twelfth, um, so far. We've had, um, over three hundred registered and that includes all ages. Um, including a hundred and sixty-three kids and forty-three teens and. Programs for. This would be the teens and kids, we've had almost fifteen hundred people, um. Our story stroll de- debuted, what, two weeks ago, I think, um, Parks and Rec got that installed, it looks. Amazing, uh, we're really pleased with the results. And there is a Q R code at the end, so that we can try to get statistics on how many people are, are viewing it, we know that. More people are viewing it than filling out the little three question survey, but so far at least forty-five people have been through them. Um, we plan on changing that out every six to eight weeks, assuming weather is, um. Enables us to, uh, and then last week, we, the Story County Library is all pulled together to have a little booth at the fair. Um, this was the first time we ever did anything like that and we had over five hundred and twenty people we talked to, so. Just in two days at the fair, so it's been busy, we've been making lots of connections with the community and we've had a lot of fun. Any questions? Thank you.
Aaron and Karen? Working on the budget?
Guys attended a workshop that Ellen Chamber put on, um, they had three attorneys there, uh, talking about the. Um, it was interesting. Here, their tape, um. And, um. That's kind of scary. Um, this week, uh, Wednesday, actually. Thursday. Uh, it's clerk academy and this is state auditor Ross Sand. I will want to see three. So we'll see what he has to say, um. Burke agreement, trying to get, um. It finished up so that we can figure out the. Project, um. Davidson to. That's our, um, to them. And preparing for all of it.
Brandon, do you have anything to add?
No, we'll, we'll take a look at the contract and scope for the C B D project for the storms who are hook up. Um, but other than that, I don't have anything to report on unless there's any questions.
Brandon, Aaron Clayton?
Nothing for me, just thanks for the flexibility, I'll be back live and in person in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Council, anything? Dane, Jason, all those in favor? Uh, opposed?